So I'd like to reconvene the meeting of the U-46 Board this evening on October 21st. My name is Jack Balandorf, Chairman of the U-46 Board. Let's start going around the table introducing ourselves. Actually, Rob, let's start on my right and we will go clockwise around.
My name is Bob Travers.
Mary Baker, Board Member from Town of Essex.
Al Bumbardier, Board Member, Essex.
Jack Balandorf, Chairman.
Just De Nova, Superintendent.
Grant Geisler, CFO.
Thank you, sir.
Brian Donahue, Board Member.
Robert Irvin, Principal, Essex High School.
Ryan McLaren, Vice Chair, Essex.
Good, thank you. We start with the reading of our mission statements and, but in the interest of time here, because we had some training that ran over a little bit, I'm just going to waive the reading of the mission statements, although I acknowledge them and they are available on the website to review them there. So our first topic is our visitors and staff to be heard, and we do have a visitor this evening, so please introduce yourself to the board and let us know what your topic of interest is.
Great, thank you. And if you can't hear me, just let me know. I feel awkward speaking into the microphone with the small crowd here. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Robin Rhodes-Aster. I live in Essex Junction and I also serve as Senior Associate Director of Admission at St. Michael's College. I was going to write a letter to the school board addressing the grading scale, which I'd like to talk a little bit about tonight, but after speaking with Brian Donahue, he recommended that I appear in person and kind of present to you what my thoughts are, so that's what I'm attempting to do here this evening, and I very much appreciate your time. I'm here tonight to address my concerns about the grading scale that's currently used at Essex High School. As a college admission counselor for over 20 years and now the parent of two students currently at Essex, I've always been a little perplexed as to why Essex High School uses a 70 passing scale in evaluating student performance. Utilizing the grading scales we currently have outlined on our school profile, a student at this high school needs a minimum of a 78 to be receiving a C minus or higher in a course. This compares into the majority of high schools nationwide who use a 60 or 65 passing scale and for whom a 70 is equivalent to a C minus. It's a pretty rigorous and aggressive grading scale in my professional experience. I know that this scale puts students at a disadvantage in the college admission process and would be happily to cite some examples of that if folks think that would be helpful. I also know in terms of merit scholarship consideration, I think it puts our students at a disadvantage. And as students at the middle schools in our district are moving towards more standards-based grading scales, in my opinion and observations, the transition to this rigorous grading scale makes that already more difficult transition for some of our students even more challenging as they adapt to this grading scale after coming out of the standards-based environment. I've heard through asking some questions that the justification for the Essex High School grading scale is that we are such a strong school academically that the grading school reflects that. I would actually argue if that's the case that the reverse is true. If we are in fact offering a higher level of quality education and challenge to our students, then a more challenging grading scale doesn't reflect stronger performance but gives the impression that performance is weaker. Again, I give an example from an applicant from Essex applying to St. Mike's with a 90 in a course, which is considered a B plus at Essex, versus the vast majority of other high schools where a 90 is actually considered an A minus. It appears that our student is not doing as well in that course as a student at a different high school in the state or in the country. Anyway, after parent teacher conferences last week, I had some informal conversations with educators, teachers, and some parents in our community, and I was really surprised to hear how many people echo my concerns. I guess I had always just assumed this was something that happened in our community and everyone was comfortable with. I guess most startling to me was that the Director of Guidance said this is something they've been fighting for for a long time, and that was very concerning to me because, again, I think their experience is something that we should recognize and certainly pay attention to if we want to see our students achieving success in their future opportunities. So after asking some more questions, I was told this is the place to begin those discussions, and I would really like to get it perhaps on a future agenda for a meeting where more people could be in the room to perhaps address the rationale behind the grading scale. I know I'm missing the history here and don't have all the information, but I certainly think it's something that we as a district should reassess and evaluate and be sure is in the best interests of our students.
Thank you. Do we have any quick questions for Robin?
Robin, you mentioned the merit scholarships. How does that work?
Again, just anecdotal example, St. Mike's, we require an A minus average, for example, for certain scholarships, for students to be considered for certain scholarships. And when a student from Essex was nominated for one of these scholarships five years ago, the student's average was a 90. We called the high school and said the student doesn't qualify for the scholarship. The Guidance Counselor said the student has a 90. I said, "Look at your profile, a 90 is a B plus. That student cannot be considered for that scholarship because they don't fall into the guidelines."
And just a quick question, in your experience as an admissions representative of St. Mike's, do you see a wide disparaging of grading scales amongst all the high schools that, you know, you've been exposed to?
There are a wide array of grading scales, and part of the reason that we use, again, for purposes of admission speaks, you know, speeches that we give or, again, for information about merit scholarships, we often translate to a letter grade because no matter what the numeric grade at a different high school, there usually is a letter equivalent. Interestingly, many schools that have a 70 passing grade, the 70 is still a C minus.
Okay.
Essex is distinct in that regard.
And you get that data from the school profile?
It's right on the profile, absolutely. But again, like in our process, for example, we translate the number grade into letter grades to make things more consistent across the board in evaluating people from different grading scales.
Okay, thank you.
Questions, I guess I'm a little confused. This is actually an issue that I have as well. So if their, my understanding is that we here report like 90%, right? Would you, do you not report the actual grade, but you report like 90% along with it, or would you actually report that as a B plus?
We report the numerical grade. Colleges transfer any high school's numerical grade to a letter grade.
Based on what the high school provides.
Based on what, correct.
The reason we call the 90 a B plus is because on Essex's profile it tells us-
It's on the profile.
Okay, okay, so if you get a 90, you don't just look at 90 as an A minus, you perceive that as a B plus?
Because the profile at Essex tells us that's how we should perceive it.
Okay, thank you.
So I think to your question is, what I was thinking is, how does, how do you get equity and fairness across all of these schools at the college admission level?
We have a very small window of evaluation in my mind between a 78 and a 100 versus other schools going from a 65 to 100, which can, again, leave fewer opportunities to differentiate between student performance, in my opinion.
Yeah. I can see why we would want to have rigorous standards so that students are working to advance their education as much as possible, but certainly don't want it to hurt them at the college admission level. That seems to be the issue.
Right.
I agree, and I think that's part of the reason, if the rationale is because we are a challenging, academically rigorous institution, our grading scale is actually penalizing students doing very well in that kind of an institution.
Understood.
All right, Robin, thank you for coming and bringing this situation to our attention.
Okay, and if you're able to get it on a future agenda, please let us know.
Absolutely.
Let me know if Brian has my contact information.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate your time. Thanks for coming, Robin. Thanks.
Next on our agenda, and I'll trust that board members have got the org notes in enough time to do a good thorough reading of what was in there. We do have our principal reports, boblets, if you don't mind, we'll start with you real quick, but.
Okay. So one item that wasn't in my principal's report that I want to bring to your attention is, last year we began our collaborative leadership project at the Tech Center. As you know, we form faculty advisory groups, I just wanted to give you a quick update on how that's going. Those advisory groups have formed themselves into six themed groups. Model for Academic Integration, Planning Next Steps, Defining and Achieving Success is the second one. Application and Enrollment at CTE, Increase Collaboration. The fifth is Outreach and Student Recruitment, and the sixth is Expanding Student Leadership Opportunities. Today was one of the meetings that we have on our calendar. These advisory groups are meeting 15 times this year. In addition, the advisory group facilitators are meeting 10 times this year, which puts them in direct contact with administration so that agendas can be formed and questions can be answered about process and content of the meetings. All of the collaborative leadership advisory groups are teacher facilitated, they're improvement-focused, and they are using appreciative inquiry model. Today I got a chance to sit in two of them, give you a quick idea of what was going on. For Model of Academic Integration, that group was working on questions that deal with the integration of technical and academic standards within our classes, and they were actually working on collaborating with administration on the professional development planning for a three-year cycle of curriculum instruction and assessment over the next three years. Another group I sat in on was Increase Collaboration, and their work today was dealing with reviewing the multiple pathways and personal learning plans legislation so that they know how to talk to middle schools and high schools about how we as a Tech Center can reach out to them and support throughout the process. It's good work, it's teacher-led work, and I think it's valuable to the center. Just wanted to bring that to your attention because I'm really proud of the way the teachers are working.
Good, thank you. Any questions for Director Travers?
No, good. Rob?
Couple of things that weren't part of the org notes. One, an update on bus ridership in terms of the islands in Georgia. Currently on a daily basis, there are over in both, on both buses I should say, over 20 students closer to 30 that ride on a daily basis. The afternoon bus, it varies because of the complexity of kids that are involved in extra and co-curriculars that don't necessarily take the bus home, but will be picked up when their practice, game, or tonight, musical practice, whatever is over because of the bus leaving at 2:50 to 2:55. I'd like the board to have a copy of Global Best Practices, which is something that, now that we have finished our NEAS, we're going through this with staff members. Each staff member has received this document, which you recall we're one of the Vermont Designated League of Innovative Schools in terms of, in terms of the New England Secondary School Consortium, and there's two main focal points by both aligning to this group. One, flexible multiple pathways, which I know the board is well aware of our work here. And the second area, which we're going to be focusing in on coming off our NEAS work and using this document, which is an internationally benchmarked self-assessment tool for secondary schools to learn about themselves, quite interestingly with our guest tonight, is proficiency-based student reporting. And one of the work of the organizers from Portland, Maine of this group is to get area colleges and universities to sign up and sign off on accepting transcripts with proficiency-based reporting rather than traditional letter and number grading. So I find it quite interesting that we have a speaker tonight, and that's our next body of work that we're looking to embark upon. Quite honestly, because that's the trend, that's the recommendation, and that's certainly what our middle schools are doing starting next year. So perhaps a follow-up question would be, will they be willing to accept a proficiency-based report card rather than modifying and tweaking numbers and letters? Because that's where we're moving with this organization. So, very timely, but I wanted the board to have a copy. There are meeting opportunities, if any of you would like to join the high school team when we go to Manchester in January and Norwood, Massachusetts in March. And it's an overnight opportunity, and there are other board members that do attend from throughout New England at these functions. I know Superintendent Dewise went on occasion or two, and Judy, I think you've been on occasion as well, so you are certainly welcome.
Thank you.
So that's different than what was in the printed org notes.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for Principal Riordan?
Yes. First question, you mentioned EHS teachers working on aligning offerings with Common Core.
Yes.
Literacy Standards, Focus on Writing, Content Area, Improving Student Performance, also Common Core and General Science Standards. Now, budget time is coming up, and in all of this report, there are no target dates for implementation. If there are target dates-
Well, the algebra is currently being implemented right now, Algebra 1.
Right.
The staff is working on geometry.
Okay.
Next Gen Science Standards, the teachers just got this summer, so I, we'll have an update when we have the Science NECAP report for you, because I know that's one of the things that you would want to find out about, but they have just barely met as a staff on that.
So, here's the question. The question is, based upon all of these items, and there are a number of them that I'm waiting for implementation, if there are implementation target dates in September of 2014, we need to know that, and there are dollars to be assigned, we need to have advanced notice if there's a cost involved. So, in looking ahead at the population numbers, the drop in 20 students, the 20 times 13,000, it's a big drop. So, we need some advanced notice if there are going to be cost implications with these implementations, and the earlier the better. I certainly would, you know, I'd just like to know that, excuse me, just a second. No, it's okay. Just, would like to see these implemented as soon as they can be because they go along with Common Core, 21st Century, graduation requirements, and all the rest of that. But I would, I would hope we could get some dates for implementation.
Yeah, we can. It's also a K-12 piece too, Al, not just a nine twelve.
You know, yeah, I'm glad you mentioned that because I think maybe the high school needs to play a larger leadership role in this, that we're not getting this done and it's going on and on, and it's like it's taking a very long time. And we've had no reports as to what's going on with those pieces, as to why we can't implement any faster.
So we are implementing Common Core this year, and as Rob alluded to, there's K-12 vertical teams, which are doing material reviews right now, so that we're positioning ourselves for whatever recommendations may be coming forward. And it's important to think in terms of programs that span across grade levels, so it's representation from all the schools and the different learning progressions at grade levels. So, there's a lot of-
Moving pieces?
Moving pieces and a lot of hype around, if you buy this material, it will be the program for the Common Core implementation, and so we're being very cautious, right, Rob?
Absolutely. Our teachers have chosen not to purchase anything-
Right.
-because a lot of stuff out there is not worth its salt-
Right.
...that's being produced. We had Mike, I'm glad you brought Common Core, because we had Michael Hawk here today addressing our faculty. He's the Director of Assessment for the state.
Right.
And since we're an S-Back pilot school, not a NECAP testing school anymore, he was here to present from the state's perspective what that is going to look like, and also to have a conversation with our teachers as to their suggestions and their feedback based upon when we pilot and our students' feedback. Now, the piloting is going to occur between February and April. Last week and the week before, we're traditionally NECAP testing windows, but obviously we're not involved with that. In terms of English, reading, writing, and mathematics, we still will be doing the Science NECAP in the spring. And as you probably saw, there will be a report by Joe Chase and Kelly Hill, but our performance was second in the state at 57% proficiency. It's as high as we've ever had.
Saw that.
So, so good job to the kids and the staff.
We're moving in the right direction, but I, you know, I just am concerned about STEM, getting the skills. The students need to have these enhanced skills and capabilities, and it's important. I don't want to lose sight of it-
Absolutely.
...but I don't want to have it delayed another year or two because we can't get something done in middle grade.
Well, the high school taking on the piloting this year of the S-Back will really lead the whole system forward in understanding what we're going to need based on that.
Yep, thank you.
It's good, a lot of good energy.
Yes.
I just, I have one comment for both Director Travers and Principal Riordan, is that, and now it kind of reflects a little bit on your last comment here, is that this past weekend I was, through my company, a participant in the Vermont Tech Jam down at the, at Memorial Auditorium, and I was very pleased to see representatives from both Center for Technology Essex and Essex High School there interfacing with some of the technology opportunities that are here in Vermont and not just displaying the work that they have done through the robotics club, through the STEM academies, some of the community service they were providing there to participants, which I can vouch for was very well received. But it was a real good opportunity for our district to get its name out in front of the technical, technical communities here, particularly in northwest Vermont, and give our students who were there the opportunity of what's going on outside of academia where they can put their skills to good use. So, well done to your staff and your teams that participated there. I thought it was a pretty good event for our team to participate in.
It was on Channel 3 too, the news, yes.
So, very good. Okay, moving on then, our reports from our task teams, again, in our, if I harken back to what's in our org notes, we have communications and, which are, committee notes are attached as in item number four in the org notes. I don't know if there's anything we want to expound on that. Judy, or-
Gary, Al, and Aaron, and-
Jack.
And Jack's been on this team.
Right.
I think that notes capture it well. I'll just remind the board that one of our objectives is board member training, and we have four board members attending the VSA, the SBA conference this Thursday and Friday, actually Wednesday night with Diana Ravitch. So, at the SU Board, they'll be reporting out some of the training opportunities and bringing back some of their experiences, so there'll be an opportunity to learn from each other as we continue to focus on wanting more of that.
Good.
Our Policy Committee is, I guess the first meeting is in November, but it's getting rescheduled. We haven't had a-
Right.
...policy meeting yet since this academic year has started, right?
Right, the November-
We just met on Wednesday.
Oh, we just, okay.
Yeah, we had one last week.
Okay.
But the November meeting is in the process of being rescheduled because we needed it for negotiations.
Okay.
So we had a, we had a good meeting and focused exclusively on the wellness policy.
Okay. And then negotiations, Brian, I don't know if there's anything you want to say, just quickly to our group about where we are with negotiations, but.
Um, no, we're meeting on the 20th of November, that's probably the-
So information went out today with November 6th and November 13th.
I haven't dug into that.
Yeah, it just went out today as two meeting dates where the proposal will be reviewed.
Okay.
Right.
So-
Before we exchange proposals on the 20th.
Right.
Right, okay.
So that's in motion.
Okay, very good. Thank you. The next topic would be, and it's not really a task, task team, but it is, well, it is separate here, is the CCSU Board update. We did have a meeting on the 30th of September. The one topic from CCSU Board that I want to share with U-46 Board is the status of where we are in our superintendent search. We have a, we have engaged Mr. Brian O'Regan, or Dr. Brian O'Regan, I should say, from a former Chittenden South Superintendent, who's an educational professor, an education professor over at St. Mike's, to be our facilitator in our superintendent search process. I'm trusting that many of you have seen, have gotten letters or survey requests either through Front Porch Forum or through emails or web postings on this, what's going on with, we're calling our SAC, our Advisory Committee, the first S is escaping me.
Sure.
Search Advisory Committee, where we're soliciting faculty, staff, community members, and a student to be part of the first pass screening process that will make report, reports back to the broader CCSU Board on potential candidates. We've gotten many inputs so far. The next CCSU Board meeting is scheduled for next Monday, the 28th of October, where coming out of that meeting, the, from the list of volunteers who've asked to participate, the selection of who is on the Search Advisory Committee or SAC will be made, and then we'll go forward from there on how the superintendent search process is going. Okay? Was there anything else, Brian, or Ryan from CCSU that we need, we wanted to share?
I'm sorry, I made a climate survey this spring.
Climate surveys, oh, yes. The other thing is, we have funded the climate survey continuation on that. One of the, one of the things we're looking at though is adjusting the timing of when the survey occurs, to do it in the spring rather than in the fall. The feedback from our climate team is that it's probably more reflective to, as people have been in school for at least half a year going on to a full year before they take the survey, rather than doing it at the beginning of the year when they might have a chance to fully process what information they're being asked for when they answer the questions. So, the climate is, survey process is alive and well, we're just kind of adjusting when that survey is going to occur.
Just had one quick question.
Yes.
When I looked at the last CCSU Board meeting, as I recall, that food deficit was still pretty high. Is, do you feel that the steps have been taken to manage that? I believe it was $180,000. Seemed like a pretty high number, and it seems like it continues to grow every year.
I do recall that, Al, I'm not in a position tonight to address it any further-
Okay.
...but let me do some investigating, we can talk about it more at the CCSU Board on next Monday.
Okay.
Okay?
Thanks.
Thank you.
Did you say the food budget?
Food deficit amount.
Well, I think we talked a little bit about how just new regulation this year added to the deficit a lot.
Okay, I wasn't aware of any of those.
It's usually pretty consistent, consistently high maybe, but steady, and there was a big jump this year just because of the healthier foods and whatnot that federally were required to be using.
Okay.
I think that's part of it.
Yeah, I just, it sounds like there was a, you know, when I read between the lines, it looked like there was a response. Just wanted to make sure that you're tracking that. Okay, thank you.
Got it, got it, thank you.
Thanks.
Moving on then, Proposed Calendar 2.0. Superintendent De Nova, you'll help lead us through this part of the discussion, right?
I will make this quick, but it's an opportunity to debrief a little bit for the purposes of- I'll make this quick, but it's an opportunity to debrief a little bit for the purposes of an update to this board. Because this is a regional conversation, but I just wanted to review some of the lessons we've learned to date. The regional conversation created a huge turnout of interested and concerned participants. EHS was the first regional forum. And we hosted over four hundred and fifty participants that night. Some wonderful learnings have come from the fact that this is the first time we've engaged in regional conversation about anything. Other than the tech center years ago, the regional tech center. And so, it's the first time the regional superintendents have created a regional proposal to advocate for personalized learning. And we're creating new partnerships to expand our thinking about learning as a constant, ongoing process. And chunking time differently to increase flexibility and opportunity. We learned regional communication channels are underdeveloped and the differences in our local resources. That will inform a regional, that will be informed by a regional framework became challenging. It's hard for people to have a regional conversation without seeing what their local calendar would look like based on the number of days. And, and how they'd be arranged. Calendar two O blog spot was yet another first attempt at a regional electronic communication. And our intention was to post information electronically about the proposal and then develop engagement opportunities. But I think that there were circumstances where people saw that proposal as a done deal. And therefore it caused an emotional response to thinking of it as something that was being mandated instead of something that was being informed. The first regional engagement opportunity was a partner summit in July. And at that time logistics and relationships began to develop, which I think forging those new relationships. Will be valuable to us in the time ahead with this conversation. It was also the first time that we've hosted four regional engagement opportunities. At which time six to eight superintendents regionally committed to attending and listening to parents, educators, students, and community members. And I think that beginning of being available and having an opportunity to talk about some of the. Some of the context behind the calendar was again, I see it as a beginning, first step. It was also the first time, and this is the part I'm most excited about, that regional student voice was sought. Through the Vermont Interscholastic Council, known as V I C, for their input. And they created, we talked earlier tonight in our training about creating a visual. And they were the ones that suggested the side-by-side view so people could see what the differences were and what the opportunities could be. And how time would be chunked. It was our first opportunity to talk about the requirements school have. Where we must ensure that all students will achieve the most rigorous standards ever proposed in history. And to prepare all students for life, college, and career. And to really talk about all means all. And that's a concept that's going to take some time to build and understand for folks. The attention became rooted in logistics and barriers unfortunately versus opportunities and possibilities. I think that was due to demonstrating what it could look like by using a twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen calendar. For the proposal and I think that felt too ambitious for people around planning. Because many of them have, many folks involved in this had plans that were built out eighteen months from now. So, people saw the change as too hurried and not having enough runway to change their plans. And thousands of people throughout the state and region are talking about this dated structure. And acknowledging some of the current logistics and barriers that need attention. So, I think we've awakened a sleeping giant as far as this dated structure. And that should continue to deepen the conversation as we move forward. I was thankful to Rob and Bob and the rest of the leadership team that recommended I speak with all of our teachers. At faculty meetings in Septembers, in September, which I did. And we created a Google Doc for teachers to provide their insights and inform information about their hopes and dreams about the calendar. So, we have all of that input now, which will be something that we can, I think will be helpful for our local conversation moving forward. And just a reminder that the calendar was rooted in many, many reports. That you've seen to date, opportunities to learn, routes to success, the VSA education quality framework. It was, that structure has been talked about and time has been talked about for a while. So, it was our first attempt to move from a report environment towards action. So, that's my appreciative thinking about the calendar conversation to date. It was difficult because the messaging got emotional and information was, there were a lot of inaccuracies. So, it was hard to not be reactive after that information, misinformation was out there for folks. So, hopefully now we look forward to re-engaging. The Chamber of Commerce has asked for us to talk with them about business, the implications for businesses and how that might look differently. And I still see it filled with maybe not that exact proposal, but at least the attention on the fact that. Is there a way to use time differently to get, to ensure all students achieve their aspirations and their potential? Which is a good question.
Thank you, Judy, do you have any questions for our, Al?
Yes. Just a comment and then I'll ask a question. I rarely agree with Armando Villasaca, but in this case, we have to recognize that this is a major social change. For families and for parents. And his response was that there's a lot of resistance in that particular area. Because it impacts what families have planned for their summer, understand that. But there was an opportunity here from an AI perspective. And sometimes the biggest opportunity comes in terms of feedback from the public. And I was really surprised to see this one from Brendan Kenny. But, as you know, my experience in, in spending quite a bit of time in Europe.
For those of you don't know, Brendan Kenny is the chairman of the Essex Town School District.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Europe and a lot of other countries that have students that are performing better have longer school days, including Saturday morning schools as well. And with a lot more enrichment in their offerings. We have been at a much shorter timeframe, but he does make two critical points. So, I'll ask the tough questions. His first point is in the absence of evidence, the vision for the change needs to be compelling and inspirational. And in his, his judgment, he didn't think that was, that a grand vision wasn't presented, that, that you couldn't get buy, buy-in. And the second point he makes is the problem at the moment is that we focused on the wrong question. So, I have talked with Bob on CTE about why the state limits our school day. What limitations do we have from the Department of Ed? Do we understand those and what can we be doing to improve that? But I think there are two questions here that we need to stop and reflect on. And see if maybe, what, how much can we do before and continue the engagement with the public? Just a thought.
And I think later tonight when we talk about the education quality standards, it'll give us an opportunity to dig into that, the context of those standards as well. And think about that, the opportunity of time and the need for flexibility as we move toward personalization.
Mm-hmm, okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Al. Anything else regarding the calendar two point O discussion? Then moving on to the next topic, which is our motorcycle class discussion. You may recall at our last board meeting, we, we were approached by a, a community member. About the motorcycle class that occurs out in, in the parking lot here, a motorcycle safety training class that occurs in the parking lot. And we've received in our org notes some additional information that was put together through administration here. On what the school, what the school uses were, some background information, a certificate of liability, et cetera. Actually, I, I don't know who's going to help in this discussion, is this something?
Well, both Grant and I are going to help answer any questions. If there's any additional information the board needs as far as what decision. You'd like to make about the concern that you heard about this class. So, before you could answer that, the request was for some additional information which we provided for you.
Right.
Is it adequate or is there something more you need to know?
Given, the, the question I would have is given that this board say doesn't take any action on this particular topic. What would be the default process going forward if, if the, and I forget what the, J and J Motorcycle Safety Course. Would, would, would approach again for a renewal of this or the opportunity to train again? Would, what, what would administration look to do here? Would we continue with this course or would we, how would this be handled outside of board action?
Well, the, the request, since it's rooted here, would probably first go to Rob.
Okay.
Rob would pass it along to the property services folks.
Okay.
They would look to see if the calendar is free for the dates that are required or requested. As long as it's in line with our policy, which it is.
Right.
If the facility was available, then it would be granted.
Okay. So, that, just so the board is aware, that is our default, it, it has been our default position. And it is pending any action that this board may be contemplating right now.
I, I guess one thing, just to be clear is, in addition to making a decision on this specific situation. I, I guess what you would be having to do is you would have to waive the policy in order to deny this group. From being able to, to rent, or, you know, to rent the facility. Or else policy eventually would have to be changed because right now the policy does, as I said, allow for it.
Well, I think the policy states that the applicant would be notified whether or not the school can accommodate the request.
Right, which.
Which is able to be.
Facility, is, is the facility available? Yes, it is, yes, it is. I mean, not all the dates, there are several dates, they, they come in with a bunch of different dates. We go through and determine which dates are available, which dates are not.
But I'm just saying that the, the school, the school has the permission based upon the group, the type of work the group does. I mean, it's still, still the property of the school, the school determines whether it's available. It's not just a, it's not just an availability situation.
Right.
If there was an egregious organization that wanted this, we wouldn't necessarily, you know, this is, this isn't necessarily public park.
Correct, policy states that CCSU believes the school facilities can and should serve as edu, the Centers for Educational Recreation. And other community events and the public use of the buildings and school grounds is highly encouraged. So, I mean, that, that's just kind of the belief statement, so just judging by that and knowing what it is that they come to do. I, I would say that it's probably something that would continue to be granted.
Do we have a policy on neighbor relations? So, we have no belief statement on, on our impact on our neighbors?
Not, not to.
Typically, I deal with them on the phone.
So, you have impact?
I do.
I can appreciate the neighbors.
I do.
The impact on, on their quality of life. Is it possible that this could just be physically moved to the back of the school to try to alleviate some of the noise?
I think that was, that's all in your materials, but I can go through your materials if you'd like.
No.
No, 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 it's not necessary, but, but as long as we can try to mitigate, we could try it.
Yeah, that, that was addressed in here, that, that has a center island down the middle of it, so.
Yeah, I agree.
I, I'm struggling on this one, on, on, for two reasons. One is, I, I do believe that our school facilities should be, serve as Centers for Education, Recreation, and other community events. And that motorcycle safety education is something that I think we all would like to see. We, we provide driver education as a, as a course of, of curriculum for our, for our students here. I could see, I'm not proposing that we would provide motorcycle education, as motorcycle driver education is, is a topic. But nevertheless, see the need to serve the community to have a motorcycle safety course. That said, I believe J and J Motorcycle Safety Course is a private business. Conducting its business on school property then, when we give them permission to do this. I mean, yes, they meet the criteria of, you know, public use and so forth, but there are, I don't know if, other than the standard. Do we charge them a fee or do we get some financial considerations from them for, for this?
Yep, number nine, rental group and fee.
Yeah.
They are considered a group three.
Oh, so they're non, so they're nonprofit, okay.
They do, the charge based on policy is fifty-four dollars for zero to eight hours. So, about twenty dates, so they pay probably about a thousand dollars a year.
I think, I mean, at this point, it is absolutely clear, we've done everything we're supposed to do by policy. We are completely in the right.
Yep.
That we're absolutely certain that J, J and J Motorcycle wishes to use our property. That it's either most effective or fits their needs or is most cost-effective. So, everything's in the right. I, I think this is a matter that there's no way in my mind that that policy dictates that we have to have our, have our facility used by anyone. And it doesn't, there's no way that would say that this singular use would outweigh the amount of AAU basketball. And other events that happen on this campus continuously. But I think we have a budding neighbor that's having an issue with this event that's discretionary to us. It's not discretionary that the neighbor lives there. So, I don't think it, I don't think, I mean, I, I think it can come down to that, I mean, we have fields that are available. But we wish to rest them and that's proper, good stewardship of our physical plant, so we don't make them available for rent. We have a parking lot that we wish not to have an activity in that causes noise, I think we get to determine that.
Absolutely, I'm just, I'm not going to make a call against somebody asking to use the property if it seems like it's allowable and appropriate.
Yeah.
You know, it's just, it's a slippery slope for me to make a call on that.
Yeah, no, I.
Yeah, I think that's, that's a perfect thing to point out.
Absolutely.
I think if it was a big, you know, the same, somebody brought up the example to me that they live next to a field that had a huge rocket weekend. You know, that kids. that had a huge rocket weekend, you know, that kids built their own rockets and, and they got to be in the backyard. And the rockets were, you know, it was like mortars coming up all day long with the whistles, and they're like, no, that isn't working for me, you know, once they're trying to, the, this is the kind of thing, this isn't just a use inside of our building or even parking, or sometimes Mozart Festival, I think, is asked to sometimes use our parking lot for an overflow if they have a rain date or something. This has a noise and impact. I think the board can certainly weigh in and, and if it needs to, call the ball.
Yeah, my biggest concern is too, is the length. It goes from May to September. It's not like the, the Rocket Day one time all summer where it's kind of sucked it up, but this is, according to our neighbor, every weekend.
How many calls did you get?
The most unrelenting, which, which I would have, which concerns me, and that there is, you know, it's not a one-shot deal. This is a, your entire summer of disruption according to, to, to the neighbors.
Right. This is, this really has an impact on people, on our neighbors. And the other thing I would, I would mention is, years ago, I can remember a development that changed, big change in character of area. We were told by the planning commission members, if you don't like it, move. You cannot believe the response that that had on people. They were just totally fed up with it, that nothing could be done according to the policies and procedures. So, these things do have an impact on our neighbors. That's a reality. I think we should try to mitigate it as much as possible at this point. At least try and mitigate it.
Do you know if this is the only place they do it? This one business?
I don't know.
I know they used, I'm not saying this group used to, but they used to do it over at Fannie Allen, that parking lot. You see the lot. I have no idea who, what, who was running it.
Yeah.
But they had the space to do it over there.
I was gonna say the same thing, I...
That was the DMV?
Perhaps. But I mean, it can be done spatially, that's the point.
Right.
I know the DMV is currently using the Public Works Depot that they have at Forty...
Right.
Yeah, used to, DMV used to be in Forty...
Well, there's nothing, there's no criteria in the policy as to, I mean, there's a line somewhere, obviously, and, I mean, you guys are using your discretion.
Yeah, to determine what accommodates.
Right, right.
So, this is not, I mean, this is not marked as an action item for this evening. I don't think that we have a pending J and J Motorcycle Safety Course scheduled in the near future. I don't know if...
Till May.
Till May, May would be the next one.
Yes.
How frequently do you approve them? I mean, do you approve it once a year for the next year?
I, I'm not sure off the top of my head. I assume it's once a year, and it's probably in the spring, and they come in with all the dates for, through the spring, or through the end of spring into early fall.
So I would think if there's gonna be any change, the sooner they would know, the more respectful that would be if they need to find another location.
Right.
Could I, could I suggest testing the idea maybe through Paul O'Brien about whether, you know, the, the policy could be interpreted that, you know, the potentialist is that we've written it so that we don't have any kind of real ways to say no. There's no grievance to it. If you do say no, it doesn't tell you who you can speak to, or it doesn't even necessarily identify the authority who's saying yes. Maybe it would just be wise to have Paul just say, um, you know, it might be one, yes, you can do this if they chose to, or it, it may be problematic the way that the policy is.
Or it might talk about adverse effects or impacts.
Yeah, it does, yeah, it's...
We've said no in the past in other situations, so it would not be precedent-setting. We've said no to AAU basketball, and we've had a myriad of other events that would have complicated things with parking and further traffic, so I...
Yeah. What you're asking is just within the quotes, it says should serve, doesn't say must serve, it's highly encouraged, doesn't say it's demanded or mandated. I mean, those are pretty open-ended phrases, just within that section.
And I don't know what community they're serving, you know, I mean. I don't know who goes to their classes, where they're from, how many people it is. You know, if it's four people on, on a Saturday...
Oh, it's...
That's a lot of...
It's the better part of ten, isn't it?
Usually.
But it's a small number of people.
Yeah.
For a large impact to the neighboring community. That's our community. I know that. They live right next to the parking lot. That's all it's for.
It's true.
Well, we can move to a decision point next.
Well, I was, what I would like to do is, 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 barring no further discussion here, take this rather from a motorcycle class discussion to a motorcycle class renewal decision, decision scheduled for our next board meeting. Okay? I think we've identified many of the issues. We have some time to mull things over. But, but I want to make sure it's, the decision is, is warned in a, in a future meeting that this is a topic. So if there is any other public members who want to weigh in on this particular topic, I want to give them the opportunity to weigh in before we make any, any decision. I'm kind of reading the tea leaves here a little bit on how I sense the board would go tonight, but I want to hear an appreciative inquiry of all the different perspectives, not just our own personal, personal views on what's going on here. So, so, uh, we'll just close the con, discussion tonight per our agenda, and we'll make this a decision topic for, for next meeting, okay? Okay, uh, next up is our new educational quality standards. Superintendent De Nova? This one is yours, okay?
So if you click your link that was included in your org notes, it'll bring you to the AOE site, to direct you to the, um, education quality conversation. I didn't make copies for folks, so I'll give you a few minutes to get there.
The one night I don't bring my computer.
Where's that at in your org notes? Is that the, I can't find it.
It's a hot link in your org notes.
At the beginning?
Page four.
Page four.
And click right on it, brings you right to the AOE site.
Are we looking for the latest, uh, six, seven, thirteen version?
There's three, and I think it's the one that's...
Am I connected to the...
It's the recommendations. Education Quality Standards Recommendations.
Okay, we can't get to it.
Yep.
We can't get to it.
Connect, how do I get connected?
Uh, I think the password is probably a password issue.
I assumed everybody was gonna, maybe, maybe we can wait on this agenda to...
What? Maybe you could give us some...
Yeah, I didn't bring copies, but I guess I could just, um...
Could, could we at least...
Give you a briefing on it.
High-level summary?
High-level summary.
Oh, okay, good, good.
So, uh, if you turn to page three, it begins with a statement purpose, and the reason why the State Board of Education is proposing changes to the standards is primarily because, um, the last update was two thousand and six, and different standards for some content areas have been adopted. For some content areas that are currently referenced as the Vermont Framework of Standards and Learning Opportunities, and also, um, and so now that we've moved to the Common Core and the Next Gen Science Standards, they need to be inserted into the rule. Additionally, the passage of Act seventy-seven in two thousand and thirteen requires schools to create personalized learning plans as a component of students' high school experience. So, and the third reason for these rules is that the graduation requirements have been significantly updated to reflect current best practice, as Rob spoke of earlier, of proficiency-based advancement from grade to grade, rather than reliance on the Carnegie units and seat time. So that's the reason why we're having, why the State Board has been holding meetings since November of two thousand and twelve with different groups throughout the state. What's, that's the context, and, um, I would say that the standards, um, when you read them in totality, really communicate an education system that enables students to take greater control of their learning, and that's a good thing. And, um, and it also collectively ensures support for every student. So I think they're standards that should be embraced, and we look forward to the changes that they will bring to the educational system. When you begin on page four of the standards, you'll begin to see lots of definitions. And these definitions are really important for this board and every board and people to understand, because we use these terms all the time, and sometimes I wonder if we have a collective understanding of what we mean when we say these words. So please spend some time, if you haven't had an opportunity yet, to really immerse yourself in what those definitions, um, communicate. So one of the big changes that we talked about is the two thousand and thirteen passage of the Flexible Pathways and Personal Learning Plans legislation. And the Flexible Pathways legislation identifies dual enrollment. And we know that the state has provided for this year and next year, for this coming year and the following year, four hundred thousand dollars to mitigate the costs of dual enrollment opportunities. But those costs in two thousand and seventeen will need to be absorbed locally. So that's your first, um, up, you know, planning around predictability about some additional costs coming, coming our way to continue to make dual enrollment possible. The concern is that within this report, there is a statement that's, anytime the rules are adopted or changed, the education, there needs to be a local cost impact statement. And embedded in this, an earlier report on that website, it states that the revised education quality standards have cost implications for local schools that are not substantially different from the current school quality standards. And I think, um, I think that's something that when we go through some of these standards, we need to talk about what potential costs may exist in different schools. They are suggesting that we may, in fact, find efficiencies and opportunities for savings as the rules remove much of the requirements for ratios of students to staff, as well as for the number of courses a student needs to take in order to graduate. That's up for interpretation about what we want and what we offer. So I think I'm doing some precursory warnings around them being, these standards being cost-neutral. Ratio, for example, if they had taken away all ratios, and I would agree, but the ratio of guidance counselors within the standards actually will require us to increase FTE in that area. And I should have started by saying that the State Board will be adopting these quality standards in January of the coming year. So...
Still input is given at this time, right, Judy?
Yes, until October twenty-eighth, um, and tonight is the...
There was, there was something that was CBU tonight on this topic, yeah.
Right, so there's an opportunity for input, but there's also an opportunity for written input, and we'll be preparing a statement with certainly encouragement that we move in this direction, and then maybe some, um, discussion about doing lane or time to position ourselves to implement them. So, as the learning plans move forward on a rolling basis for students in grade seven and eleven the first year, and there's a whole rolling, um, implementation process around them, can we also think about what that looks like in terms of, can we roll in some of these costs as time goes on for full implementation? And there is a waiver process identified in these standards. So, um, the personal learning plans will be a good example of the first time we could talk about some costs. There'll be personnel time, because we're required to have the student, the parent, and a school official meet with each and every student eventually by two thousand and eighteen, and for all grades seven through twelve. So, there's a time factor that we need to take under consideration, as well as the cost of a system. Now, Naviance has that component, and Michelle Rath presented that to us last, was it only last month?
It was last month.
So we're exploring the use of that, seven through twelve, but there are some additional costs for training, and as Brian pointed out earlier, even for parent information, how to navigate Naviance as well. So some of the costs aren't, are not as transparent as you might think. Under curriculum on page seven, curriculum content, they talk about demonstrating proficiency in seven different areas. There's a personnel cost there for time, and that was some of the context, a huge context behind calendar two oh, was where would we find the time for that work? In the high school, there's an odd, um, statement here that each school shall offer options for students in grades K through twelve to participate in at least thirty minutes of physical activity each day. This is where the standards are too specific, when they're mandating minutes in a school schedule for all students.
Bring back recess, Judy.
Yeah, so, you know, nine, twelve compliance would be difficult in that area, although we do meet the physical activity PE plus time, and we're in compliance with that now. They're also asking for us to provide supplemental learning opportunities to students in all grades who exceed these standards. So I can interpret that as perhaps additional cost, if we need to provide additional program. The next page, eight, under curriculum coordination. This curriculum coordination is going to require lots of collaboration time, and we're gonna need to figure that out, as well as ensuring kindergarten program is congruent with grades one through eight and early at as well. Most important to U forty-six board would be twenty-one, twenty point seven, which is graduation requirements policy. Local graduation policy must define proficiency-based graduation requirements based on standards adopted by the State Board of Education. And it's the responsibility of local boards to ensure alignment and expectation for all students within supervisory union or supervisory district. So again, that is, that's going to have a personnel time and cost related to it.
Judy?
Yes.
So I just want to go back to definitions and point out that the definition of school includes the fact that tech centers are now included as schools. So, it makes me think differently about this entire document, and what their intent of that definition is, I don't know, is it can apply... of that definition is, I don't know, is it can apply in all legal requirements, we're not LEAs. But just that concept of graduation requirement policy being performance proficiency-based, we'll have nine different definitions of proficiency-based performance by class or by grade level.
And it further defines it on 2120.9, the local requirements, locally, this is the problem, locally, you have to establish the criteria for demonstration of proficiency. So Bob's point is, nine different sending high schools could define it nine different ways.
As they do now.
As they do now. So it's, that will be a new body of work that we're looking forward to doing. But again, it's a new body of work that needs to be done. School leadership, I think sometimes when you think about how much evil we experienced in changing the leadership model at EHS, you see a well-defined model that kind of simulates our design team, our current design team identified here. So I believe the board is well-positioned to meet that, with the exception that leaders must have sufficient time to carry out their responsibilities in order to focus on improving student, student learning. I can't, I don't know how you guys are going to squeeze another minute out of the, out of your day now.
It's like we could use more time.
We need more time. Time is, yeah, time is key. So how we're going to look at time is going to be important. One, another place where you're ahead of the curve is in that same section, the Board of Each Supervised Reunion, in addition to other duties and authorities specifically assigned by law, shall, under D, it states, employ a person or persons qualified to provide financial and student data management services for the SU and member districts. So now that we've hired a data manager, an educational assessment manager, it was a prudent decision last year to position yourself to meet those requirements. Under 2121.2, staff, this is where there's some ratios and may require us to increase staffing identified in, in the different programs. We have established an optimum class size policy, so we'll have to think about total class roles of a teacher shall not exceed 100 students, and that's not the case that we have here in the high school. So again, where they said there were ratios that they have taken out, there's still ratios that have increased that will cause additional costs potentially. I'll just have you read this really on your own, the comprehensive system of services and support services is something that we have in place now, and you'll see at the SU budget when we talk about special education, the costs and increased costs of providing some of those programs, and we'll continue to provide multi-tiered systems of support. And this language is not new, but it does require ongoing professional development. And then the school counselors is really where they've changed the ratio, and that at the secondary level, there shall be no more than 200 students per school counselor than any other student support personnel. So that's another targeted area I wanted to bring to your attention, because that's not at all the ratio that we have currently. And it makes sense when you think about personalized learning.
If the software works, it should work fine. I mean, I think it would be more efficient. Then you've got maintenance of an existing personalized learning plan. Once you know where you're headed.
Right, we have to create the system, there's a...
A system and the initial entries, is what's going to take them.
There's a system working in the state right now to provide guidance on what those, what those personalized learning plans should look like.
There's no guidance right now?
No.
But there's a committee that's meeting, Rick Burke is on it, for the principals, and they're going to be coming out, their final meeting will be mid-January, and they're going to have a report out.
Your outputs look good, I don't know if you've seen some of the work.
I've been to the, been to the meetings, yeah.
Yeah, the outputs look pretty interesting. But that, that, it's interesting to read the legislation next to the school quality standards. Annual review of PLPs is also a requirement, so not only putting it in place, but every PLP, as they roll out, you have new students coming into the system, and you have to review the learning plans.
Annual.
Right, and specifically before fall parent teacher conferences.
Mm-hmm, or state-specific.
And they need to be communicated and sent to tech center, is what I read in the legislation. So is that similar to IEPs and 504s, and what does that look like?
Well, our goal is, our goal is to count out one, one template of PLP so that you and Burlington get the same thing from all schools.
The same, that would be tremendous.
It would be wonderful, that's why we're saying, it's all good, it's just the idea of finding the time to do the work and creating a new system, but I think it's visionary and it's what we need to do. It's just a question of the timing. And currently under development, in addition to the new curriculum, is each school shall develop a local comprehensive assessment system, and all of that's changing now because we have new standards that are being implemented. So that's under development, and that's another body of work. So it's the implementation of the standards, curriculum, material review to see what we'll need for materials, the new assessment system that'll be in play, and the personalized learning plans, as well as when those, when the state money for the dual enrollment is gone in two years, in 2017, to just be planful about what those costs will look like by tracking the data, what does dual enrollment look like now, and what our cost will be along the way.
And the new common local assessments that are being developed to align with the new Algebra I as a result of the Common Core realignment. So that's all in addition to the ESPEC.
So in a nutshell, that's just some of the highlights within the report. I do recommend you take some time to look over their local school cost impact statement, and if there's any comments you want to send to me, I'll be happy to include it in a report before October 28th so that your suggestions or input would be taken under consideration.
Okay, thank you Judy. Any, any questions on this? Again, I was able to call up the link here on wifi.
I didn't call it out. I didn't know the link was there, so I missed it.
All right, thank you Judy. Next on our, on our agenda is the FY15 budget discussion. Grant, you going to take us through that, right? Again, refer to your org notes on this, and Grant, the floor is yours.
Okay, site-based budget work is going to start about November 18th, so budget worksheets are going to go to the schools, and they're going to start their work just in about a month. The three-page budget discussion document that was in your org notes, I'm just going to touch on some of the things that might be interesting for public consumption, some cross-cutting in legislative issues. We will be moving more special ed contracted service costs from the districts to the SU to comply with Act 153. We are not moving personnel costs yet because that has to be factored into collective bargaining agreement. Healthcare reform, obviously, there's a lot of unknowns about healthcare reform. It shouldn't be a significant FY15 budget issue for us, thankfully. There's a lot of discussion about the exchange opening in January 2014 for small employers, opening in 2016 for large employers. Our plans are grandfathered, so our employees don't need to enter the exchange for now. Obviously, we'll be monitoring the flow of information about healthcare reform over the next year because it will be a big, a big impact for FY16. Education quality standards, Judy just reviewed some of the things that are popping out at us that the human resources director and myself will be talking to the high school to make sure that we're factoring those things in when we discuss staffing. Excess spending threshold, the good news is the two-vote provision language expired, so we'll be able to go back to the, the typical budget article language, we don't have to worry about two-artic, two-vote article language anymore. The excess spending threshold, however, was reduced, so the statewide average education spending per equalized pupil, that threshold has been 125%. Now it's going to drop to 123 and 15 and 16, and then down to 121 and 17 and beyond. The excess spending threshold really means that for every dollar over 125% of the average, then your local community would have to pay like $2 worth of tax impact for. I don't think excess spending threshold is going to be a big issue for us in the foreseeable future, so that's not a big deal. Dual enrollment isn't on here, but it was mentioned in education quality standards, it is legislation. We don't need to worry about that for a few years, but then we will have to pick up at least part of the cost, in some scenarios it's 50% of the cost, in other scenarios it's the whole cost. As far as tax factors are concerned, the tax commissioner is going to make a recommendation in December for base tax rates. The base tax rates could go up by as much as five cents again. Base education amount is, we're anticipating it'll increase in FY15 to allow for one-year's inflation whenever the tax rate is calculated. Common level of appraisal is another factor in the tax rate calculation. I would say that there's going to be variability in various towns, but the statewide trend is predicted to be pretty stable, so I would hope that we have just minor changes in common level of appraisal for Essex Junction and Essex Town. As far as equalized pupil counts are concerned, there is some information hot off the presses. Let's get this around. Our equalized pupil count has dropped about 2% per year since FY10. We assume that the drop's going to be about the same in FY15. If enrollment levels off, then that equalized pupil count should stabilize, which is helpful for tax rate calculation. Bill Smith is a community volunteer who does our enrollment projections, and what I just handed you out was the enrollment projections he just passed back to me. I'm going to read some notes from the backside of that paper I handed you, but just so you know, there are some notes on the backside that you might find useful later. I start off by talking about October 1 counts, and a lot of times you hear multiple numbers. On Bill Smith's October 1 count, you'll see a number of 1272. In other places, you might see a number of 1283. That's because Bill Smith doesn't count the 11 school choice students because we don't get tuition for them. So Bill Smith uses 1272, your org notes in another place mentioned 1283. You could even see a number as high as 1309 if we add in adult students and students that are in outside placements, special ed outside placements. So if you see a couple of different numbers, they all might be right, there's just three different ways to look at it. How did Bill Smith's October 1 count compare, or how did our October 1 count compare to Bill Smith's projection? We, or Bill Smith projected a decrease of 35 students this year, and we only dropped by about 20. So we didn't lose as many as, as the projection showed, which is good news. Some folks might wonder about how the new school choice legislation impacted us. If you remember, you set a limit for inbound students of 20 so that we wouldn't have major FTE issues. We actually ended up with 11 students enrolled. As far as outbound students are concerned, there are four students that are outbound to South Burlington under the old agreement, and your decision was that we would continue to pay the tuition for those students until they graduate. In addition to those four under the old agreement, there are four more new students that are leaving for the school choice option, one at each school, South Burlington, CBU, MMU, and BFA Fairfax. So under the new school choice option, we've lost four outbound, receiving 11 inbound. Some early takeaways on these projections for FY15, and just so you know, if you're looking at the chart, when it says 2014, that's October 1, 2014, so read 2014 as FY15. And some notes on FY15, Essex Junction, the number of students should be pretty stable as you can see there moving forward, actually, maybe even some small increases. Essex Town, you'll see a pretty big drop next year because we have a, a large senior class that's graduating and being replaced by a smaller ninth grade class. But Essex Town, you'll see in the future, there's kind of, it goes up, down, up, down, up, down for a while. Westford, we'll see continued decline for the next about six years. Other districts, we have about two more years of decline until it stabilizes pretty much, and you'll see the numbers are pretty much in the 110 to 115 range. Overall, enrollment should be in the 1,200 to 1,250 range for several years. Rob mentioned about busing for tuition students to the islands. Just some notes here, there is a declining enrollment trend, but if you look at from 2006 to 2011, we were losing 26 students on average a year. From 2011, when we started with bus service, that decline has dropped to just five or six kids per year. So the decline, the rate of decline has slowed at least. As far as a cost benefit, two buses cost us about $93,000. If we get 12950 for each student, then we would only need to transport 7.2 kids in order for the buses to pay for themselves. And as I mentioned, it looks like we're, you know, we've slowed that, that decline by about 20 students per year, so clearly it appears to be worthwhile. And the policy does say, as long as those kind of things are, are true, and as long as you have at least 20 kids on a bus, then we should continue with buses. So just some enrollment projection information, some tuition student information for you, and, you know, obviously, we'll be factoring this into staffing discussions whenever we meet with the schools to talk about the budget. Back to the three-page handout, I'm not going to go over factors and assumptions for specific budget areas, we will cover all that whenever we get into our budget discussions, but if you go to the final page...
Can I just ask a quick question? I've gotten myself turned around. So if I don't have a local high school, if I'm a, if I'm a town of choice, then my community continues to pay tuition to wherever I go?
Yes.
But if I have a local high school, and I choose to go someplace else, my community doesn't have to pay tuition?
Correct.
Correct.
That's correct. And your community continues to count that child for the purposes of tax.
For the purposes of tax.
And then further, if that student chooses to go on to the tech center, what does that mean?
I was hoping you were going to answer.
You get billed. So if you, if one of those seven, one of those 11 who came in chose into the tech center, the sending school doesn't get billed, but they get the ADM, you get billed.
We get billed, just to follow that train of thought out.
Yeah.
So I do have it.
Yeah.
Perfectly. Unfortunately, you had it perfectly right.
Okay, then to skip to the end of my document, just proposed budget guidance to talk about. Obviously, we want to maintain the high level of educational quality. We also want to support the essential elements of the school action plan. We've talked before about three specific areas within that. One is the possibility of a one-time investment of up to $50,000, which would result in a significant transformation in learning. That was something that we... That was something that we brought up last year, so I was planning on leaving it in there again for this year if somebody has an idea that would be appropriate for that. Secondly, there's a discretionary amount of 10 to $15,000 in the principal's budget for unanticipated needs, which has been useful in the past, and I'll likely keep that there. And then, thirdly, requirements for future planning such as visioning work. So, I know there's visioning work that needs to be budgeted for. So, those three things I will make sure are included in the guidance, or in our budget development. Obviously, we're sensitive to the burden on taxpayers as well, so we're going to be looking at the high school for keeping the education spending increased to a minimum and keeping CTE tuition to a minimum, the increase to a minimum. As far as capital planning, preserving the physical plant, we'll continue as we have in several years past of presenting a budget that's constrained to 1% of the high school general fund budget. If necessary, we may show a 2% option, as Brian's mentioned in the past. You know, there's nothing that would stop us from having an article that proposes 2% instead of 1%. Practice is just that we've been looking at 1%. So, as we build a capital plan, if there's a lot of issues that pop up, I may come in and say, "An option for 2% would look like this."
Okay.
So, I'm not looking for, you know, any vote or anything on this, but just wanted to make sure you're aware of the guidance I was planning on kind of working under. And as long as everybody seems to be comfortable with that, then we'll start with the work.
One question. What do you see as a rough cut at budget increase for this coming year? Because it's a big drop in students, and it's got ADM implications. It's a big number.
Yeah. Some challenges we know are the fund balances. I mean, we're fortunate to have a fund balance any year because we build a budget so that if we execute it exactly the way it's built, we would have no fund balance at the end.
Right.
But the fund balance is a lot lower than it was this year. The equalized pupil count, based on two years' average ADM, is going to be a little lower. But as far as throwing a percentage out there, you know, I would, I would think that we would be doing a pretty good first blush if we were able to come in at 4% or 5%. I mean, because you think about the health rate premium increase, I don't know what that's going to be. Right now, we're going to assume a 10%. I hope it's less. But whenever 80% of your budget is salaries and benefits, it's hard to really come in much, you know, and health benefits is 10% maybe. Yeah, I'd say if we can come in at about a 4 or so, 4% or 5%, that would probably be a good first cut, and then we'll see where we go from there.
Okay.
Yeah, Grant, I think last year with that whole weird article, having the two articles and stuff, we didn't mention in our warning at all 1%.
No.
So, we may, you know, there's a potential that we've decoupled ourselves from this 1% and gone to a dollar a mile. And there may not be a problem with that. Again, you know, the 1% has had such fidelity to it, but really, when it was started, it was, it was never thought to be like the end-all, be-all. It was, we're doing absolutely nothing. Maybe we could get 1% approved. And it's been that way now for 14 years. So, it's winning 65, 70% of the votes, of the votes are yeses. So, I think it's almost that now sense of going in and saying, "What's the need? What makes maybe better business practice now 15 years afterwards?"
Yeah.
Knowing that it could be more to us than just a maintenance and addressing, addressing useful life issues. It could be something that works us more towards having the kinds of funds to change around to guidance lobby, you know, some of the plans that came up, you know, bigger stuff. Just a thought, leave it up.
Do you have a question? Just curious. Now, your enrollment projections are based primarily on trends. Now, I'm thinking, as I drive home every day, I tell this is a great unknown, but I see apartment after apartment after apartment being built up. Is this a good sign for the school district? Is this a bad, I mean, could that in any way, to be fair? I mean, I know.
Depends on how many bedrooms are in there.
Because I just, I just constantly see everything, and, you know, I just wonder how, I guess you can't really take that in consideration, but.
Yeah, well, Bill Smith is, in addition to being, in addition to Bill Smith being a community volunteer, I mean, he is a demographer. I mean, and so, he goes all the way back to looking at birth data in the county.
Okay.
And then looks at that based on towns. And so, he goes all the way from birth. Another thing he does is he looks at what our history is, October 1 count history looks like year to year. So, he can judge transitions in, transitions out, what that kind of looks like. And he does Essex Town K-8, he does their enrollment projection as well. So, he sees what we've got feeding into the high school. And then, for the K-8 schools, he looks all the way down to birth data to see what's coming up from there. So, it's a little more tricky at the K-8 level than it is high school level, to tell you the truth. You know, kindergarten is probably is the most widely unknown year, is the kindergarten year because of so much going, changing from birth to kindergarten. But once they get into the system, then you have some pretty good trends on what we see year to year to year. But yeah, some of those apartments coming in, I mean, there's, some of them are one-bedroom apartments, and I'm not sure what we're seeing as far as kids in those, but.
But that would be a factor at some point when maybe getting some numbers coming in.
And there's another, from what I understand, fairly large development going in as you go past ADL on the left-hand side, just right at the town-village line. There's supposedly a pretty big development going back in there, which is not apartments, I don't think. I think it might be housing. So, houses, which that might have an impact. Thanks.
Right, good. Thank you, Grant.
It does have an impact.
I do think, Grant, this board may have, I think as we develop that 1% or 1 and 1/2 or 2% or whatever it's going to be for capital planning budget, there may be some things that this board has an interest in that we may bring to your attention, if I've heard inputs, that there's things that we'd like to see. So, just a little heads up on that. I think we can get those to you administratively, and we can plan accordingly for them. Okay?
Sure.
Nothing, no showstoppers, but. Next, we have our consent agenda. The warrants, are there, I didn't know.
The warrants are somewhere.
Oh, the warrants are over there with Ryan, okay. We have the meeting minutes of September 16th. We have a truck bid, and we have a budget transfer request. Is there anything that we need to pull from the consent agenda? Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Al, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ryan. All in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That motion passes 5-0. Thank you. Agenda items that should be calendared for future board meetings. We had the topic of, actually, I had two topics that I had notes of tonight. One is on the, what's, what did I write it down as? Are grading scale inequities, I don't know if that's quite the right term or not, but it was presented to, you know, grading scale considerations, I think I like that word better, okay? That our public asked for us to consider. I would suggest, though, that we currently remand this, this particular topic back to administration and ask administration to come back and give our board some status as to how that, you know, the thoughts behind why the scale is what it is and future directions that we may want to go.
Jack, may I just, if we found that the motorcycle process.
That was the other one I was going to.
Was helpful, you know, what we heard was visitors to be heard, and then we asked for information to be delivered. We have a chance to then deliberate on it and then go into a decision. The same could be done with the grading.
The same process, so.
When did we start? Why did we start? What do we see the benefits? What do we see the harms?
Okay.
I really, I, I, I respect the fact that we're looking at moving to something else, but I'm thinking that we got about 450 people to come out to calendar 4.0. We might have as many come out to the idea of Essex High School moving from our current grading scale to a standards-based one. It may not be, it may take a little while, and we've got something that's impacting kids, as we heard. Up to, you know, as long ago, it was five years ago, someone losing out on a merit-based follow-up.
I will say for though, Brian, that this board entertained a, not the same discussion, but a similar discussion when we went to like the Latin system and the doing away with class rank.
Correct.
I kind of see some interrelationship between that previous discussion that we had and this, and this discussion also. And I would ask Principal Reardon to kind of, as you give us some information for further consideration, to include those.
Yes.
The facts in those, in that initiative.
I'll tap into the retired director of school counseling, Tom Gibson, for some historical background.
Okay.
And is this, do we, do we share the same grading scale with CTE?
We reflect Essex, so whatever changes they would make, we'd have to consider them. Kind of like the bell schedule conversation, just, we try to stay aligned for a lot of good reasons.
Right.
I would, I would suggest that all board members take a look at the school profile report, which I think is available on our webpage, right?
Correct, yes.
And familiarize yourself with that very important document that's, that's used. For those of us who have been, as a parent, going through the college admissions process, realizing that this is the data, the school profile report, that goes out to colleges when high school transcripts are submitted, and admissions counselors look at a particular student's transcript. They look at the school profile to see, how does this transcript map into what the school has to offer, along with letters of recommendation and, you know, written essays and SAT, ACT standardized test scores? All becomes part of, part of a admissions package. So, I would suggest, though, taking a look and seeing what we have. The grading scale is a small part of a, of a large profile, is all I'm saying. There's more to it than just what the grading scale is, so. Okay? So, that's one, that's one topic. The other topic I heard that we discussed tonight is back on the motorcycle, safety course that we have an action item then before us that we'll take an action on as to what our, what our path forward will be for entertaining this course in the future on district property.
The one, the one point I was interested in is student learning opportunities.
Student learning opportunities.
Is if we are delaying certain curriculum enhancements in the high school, then I think it behooves us to have some sort of background and information about what is gating at the middle school level, the implementation of these enhancements at the high school. And at this point, I've seen nothing. We have a very active curriculum director with a large staff. We get a report once a year, but I think it behooves all of us to know what is causing the delay and what the timeframe is for resolution. But, but.
I'm uncertain, I need clarity about a delay in student learning.
Well, there's a lot of work going on at the middle school.
Yes.
The alignment of what is gating that work? What are they dependent upon? When will that work be done? We're not just going away, going ahead blindly at the high school. There are certain things that are being changed, but you need to be in sync.
Right.
And so, if there are delays at the middle grade level.
Oh, if there are, okay.
Delays. Or what the schedule is for full implementation of whatever they have to change. I'm not a, I'm not an educational expert here, so.
I understand what you're saying now.
I just want to make sure we're all in sync, we understand what, what is done, what is done, what is in progress, what's going to be implemented at the high school is one thing.
Is that the will of the board to have a curriculum instruction and assessment update by Amy Cole that evening at your next meetings?
I would certainly support a discussion in that area.
Would you like us to intertwine the science recap?
I think that.
Results?
Could it be incorporated?
Sure.
Okay.
That's an important piece.
Yep.
And we'll have fresh data on that.
Exactly.
Exactly. And that way, if we come across the budget items, we have to make some hard choices, we know what this is about.
Any other items calendared for future board meetings? Our next board meeting is December 16th, is that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Do we have a training session in between?
We do have, we do have a training session in between, but our next formal board meeting is December.
But isn't that going to be moved?
Yeah, that has to be rescheduled.
Right, we're discussing moving it.
Yes. Yes. Do we need to make that a discussion, a decision item on that tonight? Knowing that this is the 21st of October and that the 21st of November, which was our next scheduled training session, was a date that wasn't going to work?
I think we'll, I think we'll have to ask.
Mary Jane. Is this, I, I.
How about if we send out a meeting wizard?
If we want to do a meeting wizard to figure out what the best alternatives would be, I'd ask administration to help coordinate that.
Yeah, the week of Thanksgiving will be in Rochester, New York.
Okay.
I don't know whether board members have their plans, but. That's.
So. Any other agenda items that should be calendared? If not, I'd like to move into executive session for the purpose of collective bargaining, bargaining in a student member. RETN, thank you for your service to us tonight. No, I think we can move into executive session. It does?
Yeah.
Do we have a motion to move into executive session?
Executive.
Okay. To go into executive session for the purpose of collective bargaining and student matter. All right, thank you very much.